And it is normally customary for the gallery to join us in the open prayer, be your example. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power, and the glory are yours now and forever. Move now to the recognition of the traditional landowners. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Braekalong people of the Gunnai-Kernai nation, and I pay respect to their elders past and present. If there are other elders present, I would also acknowledge them. Like to be said. For the record, tonight's meeting is currently live streaming on YouTube. If anybody is on Facetube, Facebook, there is a link across to YouTube. Speakers at the council meeting will be included in the audio recording, not the video recording. If you have any concerns, please speak to a council officer. The conditions of entry to this meeting. All members of the community attending the council meeting are asked to behave in a courteous and respectful manner before, during, and after the meeting, and respectively this includes no placards, posters, or materials other than personal effects. In accordance with local law number one, please be advised that the chair may order and cause the removal of any person, including a councillor, including a councillor, who disrupts any meeting or fails to comply with the direction. Recording of council meetings, in accordance with local law one, please be advised that a person must not operate audiotape, excuse me, or other recording equipment at any council meeting without first obtaining the consent of council or the chair, as the case may be. Such consent may at any time during the course of such a meeting be revoked by the council or the chair. Thank you for that, and welcome to the gallery. I perhaps need to explain to the gallery, this is an out-of-sequence council meeting. Much of council's audio equipment was tied up at the Yonar Bushfire Centre, and many of the councils were engaged in the relief centre at the time, so we put the meeting off for a fortnight. So whilst this is the March meeting, it is a fortnight or so late. Move on councillors, apologies and leave of absence, I see that everybody is here, so I'll put that down. Okay, declarations of interest councillors. No declarations, sorry, councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, not a declaration, but just something I wanted to acknowledge. Item fifteen point three, we're considering an item in relation to an organisation where I was the chair for quite some time, whilst there is no interest or conflict, I just thought it was important to acknowledge it so that there's no confusion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Fair enough. Any other declarations of interest? Okay, on that basis, we'll move on to adoption of minutes. From the recommendation which should be behind me, is being moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Howe. Is there any opposition? If not, I'll declare that carried unanimously. Move on to acknowledgements. Councillors may raise any formal acknowledgement that they need to at this time. Is there any, yes councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge a couple of things, primarily, clearly the act of overwhelming violence and terrorism that occurred in Christchurch. I think as a council, it is important for us to acknowledge these events, but also reflect on the impact that that has on those within our community who may have had friends, families, or acquaintances who were in some way touched by those events. And in relation to that, I would also like to acknowledge the community of the Light of Adia Mosque in Moorwall, who welcomed us so openly yesterday during their open day, and also acknowledge those members of our local community who took it upon themselves to provide a level of comfort and support to the members of our Muslim community, and especially those who attend the mosque, to provide them with comfort, compassion, as well as a significant number of gifts and offerings, some by way of bringing flowers from their own gardens as gifts to those at the mosque. There were overwhelming numbers of community members from the local community who attended, participated in the open day, and offered a significant level of comfort and support. Mr Mayor, it was lovely to hear your words of comfort and compassion to the mosque attendees, and to councillors McFarlane and Clancy, who were also in attendance to offer support to those in attendance, and also to support those members of our local community, some of which openly acknowledged a level of uncertainty, and feeling unclear around their understanding of the workings of the mosque, or of the faith, which was clearly on open display during that day. Our community stepped up, Mr Mayor, they offered a level of comfort, compassion, and support, and they should be congratulated, and we obviously offer our condolences to those who have lost family members and loved ones in Christchurch. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan, is there any other councillor? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge and thank all those who helped out with the recent fire. Again, as councillor O'Callaghan said about the community stepping up, again, there were so many who stepped up for this event, and that's when you really know what community is about, everybody pulled together, and I'd like to acknowledge all those who helped out, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, on a, probably on a happier note, on the weekend, the Troagan Amateur Basketball Association held its annual tournament, using facilities at Terelgan, the Moorwall Rec Reserve, and the Churchill Rec Reserve, and the Shammi Centre at Le Vala Catholic College. They attracted over a hundred and forty teams from across Australia, which is absolute capacity for those venues, to play here over the three days of the long weekend. Absolutely fantastic to see the goodwill, but also, I just wanted to acknowledge the organisation of the event, and in particular, the committee of TABAA, but also one particular lady, Sharon Royal, who's organised the tournament for a number of years, and in trying circumstances, trying to explain to people about the fires we've had in the area, and issues with asthma, and kids coming to play with breathing problems, the work she and her committee done was absolutely outstanding. It brought in over five thousand people for three days to this city, which I think is just a great effort from a volunteer organisation, thank you.
Thank you councillor Harriman, any other councillor wish, councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to concur with the remarks of councillor Gibson in relation to the Yonar South bushfires, and to acknowledge the efforts of the CFA, all the volunteers, and all the service clubs, and all the, and the staff of this organisation who responded so adamantly in the circumstances, and also to thank the councillors who participated at Colonel Hall during the early days of the event. And so the response has been terrific by our community in the circumstances, and there was another event at Yonar Memorial Hall yesterday, at which over a hundred people, I think, were in attendance to get an update in regard to the process from here, and there is certainly, we know that a couple of houses have been lost, and we know that a number of fences are down, and I think very little loss of stock, but I think some alpacas met their maker, but more, overall, it's been a great response, and of course, the Yonar Memorial Hall is operating now as a recovery centre for those who need help and support, and I know that there are a number of agencies out there who are stepping up to the plate as well, to provide that support going forward, so it was a fantastic response, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor White, any other councillor wish to make an acknowledgement? Councillor Howe, you were adjusting your glasses. Thank you for that then councillors, we'll move on to public question time. Mr CEO, would you like to conduct that, thank you?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we do have a number of questions on notice for tonight. So the first one is from Rodney Le Plasterier and Deborah Skreli, just one of those that are present tonight. No? So, in, under council's meeting policy, if those in attendance, in terms of the questions, if they, if people don't actually participate at the meeting, councillor actually has the discretion of not actually reading out the questions, but in this instance, there's only one question from this particular person, there are a series of other questions from Mr Geddes, I think there's four in total, I notice he's not present either tonight, so the process is such that they can be recorded in the minutes of the council meeting, but not necessarily read out aloud, but I'm at your discretion, Mr Mayor, as to whether you want me to read all of those. But the first one, as I touched on, is from Rodney Le Plasterier and Deborah Skreli, it's regarding the Hazelwood Pondige closure, and the question is, how can council once again decide, that we decide how to always have to evacuate our sites by thirty first of March, when local member Russell North has proceedings in place to get the state government to step in and save Hazelwood Pondige? So in response to that, councillors will recall it, the third of December council meeting, council resolved to close the site on fourteenth of January, I think it was, and that site hold was having till thirty first of March this year, to remove site belongings from the Hazelwood Pondige. Council made that decision after having taken into account a range of factors, including the ongoing, the ongoing uncertainty surrounding the future of the Hazelwood Pondige waterway, the ongoing operational constraints of the caravan park at that time, particularly with the firefighting service, and the lease terms for the site that, and the requirement, sorry, to return the caravan park back to its original state, and this decision is now being implanted. On the same night, through a separate motion, though, council will recall that there was a decision made to send a letter to the premier, Dan Andrews, sorry, requesting a meeting regarding the future of the Hazelwood Pondige waterway, and council is determined to continue to pursue the ongoing future of recreational use of the Pondige waterway with the state government to ensure the best outcome for the community, and understand that this may take some time to determine. Obviously since then, the local member, Russell North, has also started petition and supported retention of the Pondige waterway for recreational uses. I might add that council has recently received advice from the state government, that the long-term use of the Pondige, that the long-term uses of the Pondige site may support, are also being considered as part of the land use opportunities within the Latrobe Valley Regional Rehabilitation Strategy being prepared by the department. That's the question, Mr Mayor, responsive. Mr Geddes has a number of questions that I did touch on, they relate to the planning permit application for the asbestos disposal, and some others related to future Moorwells.
I believe that they will be published in the minutes?
Yes, they will be published in the minutes.
As Mr Geddes isn't here to hear the answers, we'll publish them in the agenda, thank you very much for that. Now we move on to speakers, and I believe we have only one speaker tonight, Mr Dale Stott, I believe, speaking on item fourteen point one, which is the proposed amendment to the Franklin Place Development Plan. Mr Stott, would you like to come up to the lectern there? The procedure is that you have three minutes, and then we'd ask you to remain to take questions from the councillors.
Yep. So yeah, as mentioned, my name's Dale Stott, I'm the director of Six Star Developments, I also am the manager of that site there, and the reason I'm here tonight, obviously to speak for the motion, the putting up, or the proposal that we're putting up. I'm a passionate Terelgan person, I've lived there all my life, and I'd like to see it adopted because of the mixture of lot sizes we've got there to integrate the community. We've, we've noticed that we get quite a lot of demand for large lots as well as small lots, and I'd like to see that the mixture of lots within the community, so we're not segregating people within the community. As a developer and someone who's, we've got, you know, quite a bit of land still to go, we're always looking to do what's in the best interest for the community as well as our, you know, ourselves, because if we're not doing the right thing by both, obviously what we produce won't continue. I think what we've done up until this point has probably proven itself to be an extremely good subdivision, so the idea of having a large lots as well as small lots that we can't further subdivide, really interacts the community. A lot of the people that we're wanting to, we have been selling some of the smaller lots to, and then the demand that we're getting from downsizes, so people that have come off land, or are older people in the community, or single people who don't want large lots, but actually would like to live in the community, where if you go to, we've looked at some of the other estates, and the problem being, they, if you have a consistent number of, like a small to medium density, you attract a large demographic of the same type of people, where if you actually mix your lots up to having larger lots and then some smaller lots, you tend to get a real mixture within the community, and I think that's something that we really need to look at. We've got a lot of people from, professional people, we've sold a number of these lots to people from, who've come down from Melbourne to work at the hospital, they're not interested in maintaining yards, they just, but they would like to live in amongst the community in a good area, and that's what we certainly offer to the community. We've, the plan that we have put up, we have obviously sent that out to some of the real estates and other people, avenues that we deal with, we're selling it, and of the lots that we currently have out there, we've got firm indication on, we've got eight lots, I think, that are classed as smaller lots, and we've got firm commitments on four of those lots already. Sorry? I'll take it that bell was my time, was it?
It was, but did you have much more to say?
No, I can actually all come up in question time, and I'm happy to speak about that if people have got questions as to why we want to do things the way we do.
Thank you very much, if you'd just stay there. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you Dale, you were saying about the smaller blocks?
Yep.
Can you expand on that a little bit more, please?
So smaller lots, what we've done in our previous stage in stage seven, we had some lots that were of about eight hundred square metres, and we found that some of those corner lots were actually quite hard to move, but what we did is actually, in, on three of those lots, we cut them into smaller lots, and they were the first to go, so that identified that there was actually a real demand for those lots, because there's a lot of people wanting to get into those, or into an area which they consider a nice area to live, but they can't afford necessarily to buy eight hundred square metres, or a thousand square metres, or even seven hundred, so by creating some smaller lots, it actually was, it allowed first home buyers to get into the market as well, and, and of course, people that were looking to downsize, it made it, you know, a really, an attractive option for them. So, and, and we've, since doing it, like I said, we've, out of the eight lots that were put up there, we've had a lot of people creating, you know, with a lot of interest for it, and we've got commitments on four of those lots already. As well as that, we're not only just getting, we've also had some very reputable builders wanting some of those lots, which is something that most people, there's been some talk about that, there's some, some people that were not thinking that we're going to get undesirables in there, well, the most prestigious builder in the Latrobe Valley is Virtue Homes, and of course, they want a couple of those lots as well, to expand some of their products as well, so.
You have a second question?
Yes, please. So you were also saying that if you, you've done it purposely, that the corner blocks are small, so people who are buying into the estate don't go there thinking they're all the same, and then suddenly those larger lots on the corners are re-subdivided, is that you're thinking?
Our whole subdivision, right from the start, we've allowed no further subdivision, so everybody knows exactly what they get into, and that's something that people don't like, they like to know if they buy the block, that's what's happening, so we've put covenants on our blocks to stop any further subdivision. The only lots that have, we have identified some medium density lots, and they were clearly marked right at the start, and they have, they have options for varying amounts of dwellings on it, but that's quite, that's within, within the regulations and quite, you know, spelled out there. But as for the other lots, well, yeah, they're, they're not necessarily just corner lots, by the way, either too, they're in, sometimes there's some lots in between, like, we've got some there, rather than two lots, we've made it a three in a row sort of thing, but it's, they're scattered without, within the subdivision, so you're mixing people, nobody's, you're not putting people all in one area, which is something that we know causes problems, but there's certainly what they, you know, areas within towns that are non-desirables, which we don't want to create, but, you know, we quite often get a family with a, you know, a family with a bigger block, and then mum's now single, and she wants a little place, but she doesn't want to live in, in the back blocks, in a, in a, necessarily in a high density, she would like to live on a small block within the community of, that she's grown up in, so that's why we're finding them really popular in that regards, and we haven't, it's not about trying to cram as many blocks into the, to the estate as possible, you know, I think we've proven that, we've, we've sold fifty percent of Terelgan's land over the last five years, and we've produced a really good product. Now, there's no way we would do something that was going to jeopardise what we've got going, which has been a really good thing, so.
Thank you, councillors, councillor Clancy.
Thanks, Mr Scott, there's been much talk about density and eleven point four dwellings per hectare, and at this council, we're, we're going to be chasing that, that eleven number?
Yep.
This is eleven point four. You've already got some unencumbered open space that actually opens that up, you've previously developed, haven't you?
Yes, we do, yep.
What does that bring the number down to?
Um, I haven't, I'm not exactly sure, so what's happened, because we have a large parcel of land through the middle of the property, we've, there's no point creating a really small pocket of land which is sort of unusable, so because we've got the large, which is the Roz line through the property, which we've, we've fronted all the properties onto it to make it a very interactive open space, because we've got that all, it's actually technically listed in the stages one to seven, it doesn't actually come into the formulas for stages eight and nine, therefore, if you actually include the eight percent public open space, of which we've got that well and truly above, we meet those quotas well and truly above that with the land on the other, the other section, we'd actually be a much, a lower density, so it's a little bit, it's just the way it's measured, does confuse it a little bit, but if you actually added eight percent to it, you would find that you're actually over, or under your eleven point four, or under eleven, you're actually, you know, point eight percent, eight percent.
Councillors, any other questions? If not, sorry councillor White.
So I'm just curious to know whether, what your response might be to a view that says something about the fact that the development opposite to yours is, was marked on the basis of being a... being a, the next, your development would include a significant met need, which is the undersupply of aging, of a combination of the aging local market. And I note that you were originally a proponent, I think, in that regard, but you've changed your mind, is that right? And is that clear?
So we originally identified, we, the potential for a lifestyle development. Unfortunately, there is no commercial desire to do anything in that regards. We've, we've put that out there to numerous companies to do it and then with no feedback from them, unfortunately. But I do still think that the area probably could do with one. We've got, you know, Del Keith, which is pretty well full. But at the end of the day, you know, I'm not a retirement developer or as in I don't, it's not my space, I don't know it. So unless somebody else wants to come and do it, that makes it very hard. So the parcel land at the end of the day is residential land. So, you know, if, and that's what is, we're certainly, because of the quality of this state and the way it's been moving, we've, we've certainly got the demand. We've already got commitments on, in the first stage, we've already got 26 commitments for the 40 lots. So, you know, if it wasn't, if it wasn't, if the demand wasn't there, we certainly wouldn't have that. And I imagine within two months, we'll probably be releasing the stage nine and constructing the whole lot together. Which is certainly something that, you know, the builders are ringing us all the time because currently there's, they're starting to become a shortage. We don't have anything left in stages one to, oh, we have three blocks left, I think, in stages one to seven. So we've constantly been moving it, moving it because it's a, it's a good place to live.
Thank you councillor White. Any other councillor with a question? If not, Mr Stott, you're released.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, we now move on to the section of the agenda entitled notices of motion. I might depart slightly from normal procedure here with your indulgence. The first notice of motion is about inglobo land. Now, I doubt, with no disrespect to the gallery or the press, I doubt if anybody has heard of that word before. So I'll ask the CEO to explain what inglobo land is.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So inglobo land is land that's generally defined as undeveloped or has minimal development, largely unserviced in terms of infrastructure provision to the site. And it is zoned to allow for subdivision into smaller parcels. And the term usually refers to a large parcel of land consisting of one or more lots, which could be subdivided into at least five or more lots, able to be subdivided readily.
Thank you, Mr CEO. On that basis, we'll move on to item 9.1. Councillor Harriman, you've lodged this notice of motion.
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
You are moving. The motion is on the screen behind me. Do I have a second? Seconded councillor McFarlane. Do we have any opposition? Did I miss? No opposition. Do you wish to speak councillor?
Can't, can't pass up the, if I get the words right, Mr Mayor, we'll be laughing. Can't pass up the opportunity to use the word inglobo land in a sense that makes sense. Just for the sake of the gallery, basically, we have land that's been allocated as residential from farmland in the city. It has, as inglobo land says, it has no services to it at this point in time. It is unable to be developed at this point in time because the services aren't there. And we're rating it as though it could be subdivided already and the value of the land is that of subdivided land. To make it very hard for people with small blocks and with farming land to actually continue those pursuits. The reason we're looking at inglobo land in this light is if the land was ready to be developed and the services are there and it could be sold, then we're more than happy for it to be subdivided. When it's land that doesn't have the services to it, it places an unnecessary burden on those rate payers that have that land. And it's interesting to understand that they're paying a higher percentage, which means everyone else is paying or some others are paying less. So you've got people trying to make a living off the land, paying rates as though it was being taxed as or rated as a range of smaller blocks and residential blocks when they're trying to make a living off the land. This is just to ask for a report to come back showing the effect that making these changes would have and how we can make it fairer for everybody. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak? Councillor McFarlane, having declined, does any other councillor wish to speak?
Sorry. Sorry, Mr Mayor, it would be very brief. I just want to say, I think that this, that we, this motion is very timely and it is important, I think, that we do give this matter a thorough examination and to be able to understand the implications of any outcomes that might be coming out of it. But I think that I concur with councillor Harriman's remarks that, that we need to have a look at this situation because I think that there is, there is an issue here that needs to be addressed.
Thank you councillor White. No other speakers? If not, councillor Harriman, do you wish to close? Okay. On that basis, having had speakers, we need to vote on this one. I thought just for a change, I might go that way. Seeing I've had a lot of complaints that I can't see them. Councillor Clancy. For councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Harriman, councillor Howe. Councillor Law. Councillor Gibson. Councillor McFarlane. Councillor White. And myself carried unanimously. Move on to the next item, which is item 9.2. You have moved this item or you proposed this item.
Yes, please.
Councillor Gibson, you're moving that. Do we have a second? Thank you councillor Harriman. Any opposition councillors? Opposition from councillor McFarlane? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's pretty simple. As you know, at the last council meeting, I put a similar motion up. It was for the Moei area over the last 10 years. Now, since then, different ones have come to me and said, that's only part of the story. Look at the whole lot. So that's what I'm doing. And I've also included council as well with the capital works. So it's not your nitty gritty. And this gives everybody the clear story. There's no arguments, it's just getting the facts. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Harriman. Any other speaker? Sorry, councillor McFarlane, of course.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't believe that this motion is necessary and in fact, a waste of resources to provide a further report. You might recall at the request of my colleague across the table here, we received a report back in, beginning 4th of December, actually, which looks at capital expenditure, both government funded and council funded, over the last 10 years. And I believe we have the information that allows us to talk to our interested members of our community about that information. I suppose my concern is that we've worked hard as a council to create a one Latrobe. But I think we're quite there yet, but we have had some success. We've moved past the parochial era to one of a more united community and I wanted to keep it that way. I think it's a bit dangerous at times throwing a whole heap of figures out into public space. And I know we've got it, we can discuss it with the public, but just to publish it in public space where one can interpret the figures or parts of the figures to suit a particular cause. And my concern is that that promotes and can promote some division within our municipality. Mr Mayor, I'm certainly committed to acknowledging Latrobe's one of the four regional major cities. I'm committed to progressing a new brand for our municipality and I'm certainly committed to promoting a one Latrobe. So I think we've really got to focus on the future and not the past. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Is there a speaker for the motion? Speaker against? Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor Gibson, do you wish to close?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Actually, I'm in agreement with councillor McFarlane. But it's for that reason I want the information out there. It's not a lot of work for our officers because, as you said, we do have this information and it's not out in the public domain. And because of different ones with the parochialism, to me, it is just stopping that. It's putting the facts out because so often, different ones say, a lot of difference, chatter about different parts of the municipality and this just stops it because you actually have the facts. So I wasn't after putting a lot of work on our officers' hands and I was actually looking for one Latrobe, which is what councillor McFarlane says. So actually, for those reasons, that's why I did it in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. There having been speakers, councillor, I ask you to vote. Councillor Clancy. You're against. Oh, thank you. You're just sitting there staring at me. There has to be some movement. Okay. Councillor O'Callaghan. For. Councillor Harriman. For. Councillor Howe. For. Councillor Law. Against. Councillor Gibson. For. Councillor McFarlane. Against. Councillor White. For. Thank you. The motion is lost. Oh, sorry, I can't even count. Sorry, counted the wrong column. The motion is carried. Move on councillors, there's nothing on the agenda for items 10, 11, 12 or 13. Shall we move on to? Oh, you're already up for 14.1, okay. Item 14.1, proposed amendment to the Franklin Place development plan. Are you moving one of the proposed alternate motions or are you moving the motion?
I'm moving the original.
The original motion. Okay, seconded. Councillor Gibson moving, councillor McFarlane is seconding. Any opposition? This is councillor Harriman. On that basis, councillor Gibson. Just procedurally, this motion would have to fall before we can put the alternatives up. Okay. Members of the gallery, if you wondered what that little side conversation was, there have been a number of foreshadowed alternate motions for this. They cannot proceed unless this motion fails. So councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you would have heard previously, the developer came and spoke. We have, for a long time, we have tried to do 11 lots per hectare and he spoke to that end. He actually, so they are 11.4. But if you actually listen to what my fellow councillor, the question my fellow councillor asked, they would actually be under 11 lots per hectare. So they tick all the boxes. So we can argue the toss here for 0.4 technically and then they go to VCAT and it wastes our money and everybody else's money and they will get it regardless. So he has also told us that so many times in the past, corner blocks especially have been, they're large corner blocks and they have been sold and everybody buys into the estate and no soon do they turn around and that's been re-subdivided. This isn't going to be re-subdivided. There is actually a covenant on the blocks. So you know what you get when you're signing up to it. He's also told us that out of the 40 lots, 26 have been sold. So 14 lots to go before it's even on the market per se. And they are not cheap. I would say they're not cheap blocks, no. So you know what you're getting when you come into this development. And for 0.4 technically, I'm sorry, I'll move to accept the original.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor McFarlane.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having familiarised myself with the detail of the report and inspected the location, I'm more than satisfied the proposal will be good for our community. Whilst Livework Latrobe is not yet finalised, the proposed density of 11.4 dwellings per hectare is near where we want it to be. And I think very importantly, the layout and sizes of the blocks as proposed in this subdivision are appropriate and provides a range of choices, as we've heard, to those who wish to live in the location. Franklin Place is certainly in its current form a very nice development. By endorsing the amendment, that will allow this section of Trelvegan to progress and soon be fully occupied. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harriman.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, we'll at this point foreshadow an alternate, which is alternate motion number one, which will be the only one I'll be putting up. Just to counter a couple of things raised by my co-colleagues, the small blocks aren't on the corner, they're all lined up together. In estates where we use corner blocks as smaller blocks, it's not down a street. And the reason I bring that up is that across Ark Lane, in the Strand, we have a number of smaller blocks together, the same as is going to occur here. And if my colleagues flick to somewhere in there, page, pardon me, Mr Mayor. Anyway, it's in there. There's three blocks beside each other and opposite each other. In other developments that we've got in this area, that is where we've caused dramas. The developer, I understand it's a great development, I have nothing against the development. But he's also already mentioned that there's a covenant, you can't break up blocks. That's for the people that buy it. The developer's already admitted that there's been larger blocks, they've already broken up. So if we're going to go at this plan, then we're accepting that there's going to be blocks broken up and it, or can be broken up by the developer and more smaller blocks put in. They've done it already. What I'm asking in the alternate, which I'll get to, is to bring it to 11. This council has had a steady line for a long time of 11 lots per hectare. Wider roads, 11 lots per hectare and no small blocks altogether. We've had talks with our planners before in the past that when we're looking at developments, we're looking at corner blocks if there's to be smaller blocks. Or if there's a larger block to be broken up, then it's on the entrance to a court on the corners. We don't want a lot of smaller blocks together, simply because of the issues we've had in other areas around Trelvegan, very close to this very estate. Council has looked in the past, and I know some of the councillors have been here when we did it, when we're speaking with a planner, planning manager, about having our smaller blocks closer to the centre of the city, where there's transport, where there's ease of getting there. If we're putting in smaller blocks and we're getting units on there, then generally, we're attracting people without transport. And I'll point out, there's no, from my understanding, I could be proved wrong if the CEO wants to check with his planners, but I've got a feeling there's no bus routes through here. So if you can put larger blocks on or medium to large blocks with room for the cars and families, that's where you want them on the outer edges of the town. Closer into the CBD and around the old developed areas now is where you want your smaller blocks. That is something that we've spoken to planners about. That is something this council in the past has said it wanted to do. And that's why I am opposing this for 0.4. I know it's not much, but it's the precedence it sets and also the layout of the smaller blocks. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Is there a speaker for the recommendation? Speaker against the recommendation? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Livework Latrobe is a document that we asked for. Obviously, there's several other meetings. What councillor Harriman says is right, it's only 0.4. But we need to send a message out to future developers that 11 is where we've set our standard. I don't think we should deviate from it. We don't want to set a precedent. And we don't want people, future developers coming in with 11.8, which is only 0.4 over what we might accept tonight. I think we should stick with the 11 lots per hectare. Thanks.
Thank you. Does any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor Gibson, would you like to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Okay, I have listened to my fellow councillors, all of them. And I also, and I come back to the question my fellow councillor asked about the open space. Thank you. So it actually changes it from open space. Thank you. So it actually changes it from 11.4 to under 11 lots. So, and the other thing that, we're assuming that smaller lots means no transport. Well, how many older people who buy smaller lots are still driving? There's a hell of a lot who do that. So we're assuming if you bought a small lot, you've got no transport. No, I don't think that's the case at all. Look, I'm not going to have an argy-bargy across the room. I'll move the motion as it is. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. There having been speakers and opposition, we'll put it to the vote. And I'll drop my attempt to shorten the vote. All those in favour, councillor Clancy? Councillor Law? Councillor McFarlane? Councillor Gibson? Councillors against? Councillor O'Callaghan, Harriman, Howe, White and Middlemiss? Motion has not been carried. Recommendation not made. Now, there was a foreshadowed...
Yes.
I'll ask that the foreshadowed alternate motion number one be placed up, Mr Mayor.
The foreshadowed motion is behind me.
I'd be second, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. It's moved by councillor Harriman, seconded by councillor O'Callaghan. Is there any opposition? No opposition? Okay. Do you wish to speak councillor Harriman?
I better, Mr Mayor. Just to explain why 0.4 is important. As councillor Howe rightly pointed out, it is a line in the sand. 11 is where Live Work Latrobe goes. 11 is where this council, I believe for six, seven years now, has been pushing. I do believe, put up an alternate motion, a notice of motion, seven years ago to bring in 11 lots per hectare. And I think it was shared with councillor White that we put that up. Mr Mayor, there's a reason we want 11 lots per hectare. We've looked at the past of how to develop a city. We have developments in this city where we have 22 lots per hectare land, 5Ks with no bus routes from the CBD centre. And while this doesn't go to that extent, and I acknowledge with the developer that it doesn't, there comes a time we need to say this is where we see the city developing. With Franklin Place, it's a great little development, no mistake about it. 0.4 is not going to make a huge difference to the developer or to the development. But when it comes to future developments, when it comes to an orderly city development with what this council sees, from information we've received from our rate payers about what they want and voicing their view, which is our job, this is where they wanted to draw a line. Too often we've had people say, sick of lots of small lots together. They're sick of McClellan, if I can use the terminology, and councillor O'Callaghan, please settle, McClellan Place, developments like that, where we're getting small lots amalgamated together. What we're after is we want everybody to be able to share in the community, but that means not having lots of small lots together. It means if we're going to develop small lots, we put them around the CBD where it's ease of access for those that need it. It's only 0.4, it's not a huge change, but it does, as councillor Howe said, put a line in the sand. And I think that's the message we need to send tonight. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I fully agree with councillor Harriman. In relation to this, we've been consistent in our approach to the 11 lots per hectare. It is a reflection of consideration of community's expectation around our developments, what they look like, but also reflects those concerns raised that are not in relation to this specific development, but have arisen out of other developments that are actually proximate to this one. I think it is important that we give due consideration to that and to all of the work that was undertaken in relation to Live Work Latrobe. I did want to reference some comments made by councillor Gibson earlier. She's not here to discuss them more fully, so I'll speak to them. But in relation to aging, aging in place, smaller lots and availability of transport, we have conducted a broad range of consultation and work in relation to our positive aging plans. Transport wasn't an issue that was raised. Proximity to public transport, access to amenity and facility in a range of places, not only for health wellbeing, but consideration to other access within community is acknowledged, has been considered broadly and is reflected not only in our positive aging plan, in Live Work Latrobe, but in a range of our planning guides that ensures that for those who choose to age in place within community, that they do have proximate access. That includes access to transport. We have discussed this particular area of the town in the past in relation to smaller lot sizes and that the reflection of aging in place does not necessarily apply to this particular precinct. I would actually suggest that it would be one of the reasons why it wasn't an attractive option for further development on the previous proposal. So I do agree with councillor Harriman. There is an opportunity to have a very attractive, suitably amenable development in this particular area. But on the basis of what councillor Harriman has put forward, I think that is fair and reasonable and would still see a good outcome not only for the community but also for the developer. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. There was no opposition, but does any other councillor wish to speak? If not, do you wish to close councillor Harriman?
I do, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, just with this, I'll point out to councillors that they have in their hands, there was a second alternate motion, which I won't be foreshadowing and which I won't be putting up, which limited the smallest of blocks to 550 square metres. I'm not about to impose that on this developer at this late stage. What I would, Mr Mayor, is through you to the CEO and the officers, particularly the planning department, councillors consistently said it doesn't like smaller blocks in developments outside of the CBD or those that aren't on the corner of courts. Mr Mayor, I would just be asking you if you could pass that on to the CEO to bring up with their planning staff. The developers don't deserve, and I'm not having a go at our planning staff, but it's, we've got a developer that's had this project on the go for a number of years, he finally gets it before council. And because of the community concern we have and that we have voiced for a number of years, we're changing it on him. And I apologise for that. But I'm asking, Mr Mayor, if the CEO, if you through the CEO, back through the officers, can make our officers aware, this is what council is looking for. So when we get developers up here in the future, they're bringing in proposals where they've been told what the council expectation will be. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Never mind. Can't walk and chew gum. Next item, item 15.1, infrastructure and recreation. The recommendation is on the screen behind us, council. So move. Mover is councillor O'Callaghan. Do I have a seconder?
Very happy to see you, Mr Mayor.
So Howe? Oh, his favourite project, yes. Or should I say the favourite project of both councillors? Is there any opposition councillors? No opposition? Does councillor O'Callaghan, do you wish to speak?
Very briefly, Mr Mayor. I know that will surprise you somewhat.
It does, it does.
Mr Mayor, basically what we're looking here is to secure council's endorsement of our funding application for round two of the Regional Roads Victoria Fixing Country Roads Programme. There are a number of projects listed, some of which are projects well-known to councillors and community, being Black Tank Road, Railway Avenue, Glengarry and also MacPherson's Road Moi, which were discussed in conjunction with each other in previous matters considered before council. Black Tank Road in particular has had a longstanding history of community engagement, consultation and concern. Over a period of time, we've had representation from community organisations, groups and individual residents within that area. Councillor Gibson also brought to the chamber consideration from MacPherson's Road Moi, which was also considered in relation to that. There are other projects that council officers have deemed to be worthy of consideration, being Buckley's Road, Hazelwood North and Flynn's Creek Road in Flynn. There is also an element of council's consideration of a contribution to funding, should we be able to secure the agreement of the state government to provide funding for these projects. I think they are all worthy of consideration. It is absolutely no surprise to anyone that I stand to speak in support particularly of Black Tank Road and Railway Avenue, Glengarry. I think those residents were with us this evening, who have fought long and hard to see consideration of that particular project. And I'm pleased at that and the others are put to council for consideration so that we can try to secure funding for them at this particular time. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Howe? Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak? Okay, fine. There was no opposition indicated, but does any other councillor wish to speak?
No, I hope I'm not stealing. If I may, just very quickly, Mr Mayor, if I can put out there that this funding goes to Regional Roads Victoria, we're willing to do our bit as a local council. Can I advise anybody who lives on any of these roads that they need to contact their upper house members for the region, who are members of the government, state government? That's Harriet Ching, whose office is just down the road, and the honourable Jane Garrett, whose office is in Pakenham. Ring them, email them, call them, get your friends to do the same. The more pressure we put on, the more chance we've got of getting the funding out of the state government.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, do you wish to close councillor O'Callaghan?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Having had speakers, councillors, we need to vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Harriman, councillor Howe, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson not there, and myself, carried unanimously, or unanimously of those who are here. When we've finished the discussion with the gallery, we might move on to the agenda. 15.2, Latrobe Leisure Special Fees Policy. The councillor White, you're moving?
Moving.
And do I have a seconder?
Happy to second.
Councillor Clancy? Okay. Do I have any opposition? No opposition? Do you wish to speak councillor White?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a very comprehensive report and it's all about trying to get greater participation at our leisure centres. And I think that the report is pretty much self-explanatory. It's about getting the community moving by growing existing active living initiatives or creating new opportunities, creating affordable, low cost or no cost physical activity opportunities at Latrobe leisure facilities for the community, growing participation, physical activity for traditionally disadvantaged demographics, thinking about women, Aboriginal, Torres Strait Islander, the community, et cetera, and building environments that promote physical activity, social connection and reduce feelings of isolation and loneliness. So I think that this all aligns with the Living Well Latrobe Health and Wellbeing Plan 2017-2021. And I think that this initiative is, as I said at the outset, is all about trying to engage or create additional opportunities for our community to be active and getting involved at our leisure facilities, which are particularly in those, at those hours of the day which are less utilised. And there are those times. And so we would encourage our community to take full advantage of the proposed arrangements.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor Clancy? Elegantly, elegantly. I like it, I like it. There was no opposition, but would any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor White, would you like to close? Okay. We have had, we have no opposition, but we've had speakers, councillors, so we'll put it to the vote, those four. All councillors present voted for it, carried unanimously. Moving on to item 15.3. Councillor McFarlane moving. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Howe? Any opposition? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane? Okay. Councillor Howe? We have had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote councillors. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, O'Callaghan, Harriman, Howe, Law, Gibson absent, McFarlane, White, Middlemiss, carried unanimously. Move on to item 15.4, Natural Environment and Sustainable Strategy. The resolution councillors is on the screen. Simply to note a report, do I have a mover?
Moved.
Councillor White. Somebody to second, councillor Law? Do I have any opposition councillors? I'll ask the other meeting whether they've got any opposition. I like to score one a night. Okay. Technical issues. We have two technicians here. You're right? Okay, fair enough. Okay, there was no opposition. On that basis, councillor White, do you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Law? No speakers, no opposition. The matter is carried unanimously. That's 15.4. Moving on to item 17.1. Have to bear with me for a moment councillor McFarlane, I'm failing to keep up. I didn't tab the agenda. This item is proposed road discontinuance, Very Lane Mall. That's moved by councillor McFarlane and seconded by councillor White. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane?
Oh, just briefly, Mr Mayor, this resolution finalises the jigsaw to allow the fire station development to move forward. We have had some, a number of discussions with different occupants in relation to this lane. And I believe I'm satisfied now that all the issues have been dealt with and we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Do you wish to speak councillor White?
No, Mr Mayor.
Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor McFarlane, would you like to close? Okay, so as we have had speakers, councillors, we'll have to put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, O'Callaghan, Harriman, Howe, Law, councillor Gibson absent, McFarlane, White and Middlemiss, carried unanimously of those who are here anyway. Move on to item 17.2. This is the authorisation of council offices under the Planning Environment Redact 1987. The resolution is behind us. You're moving councillor?
Asking to defer, according to Mr Mayor.
Okay, you're moving deferment. Do you wish to put a time? Do I want it to be deferred to, or a simple procedural deferral? So you're moving that this matter be deferred to the next ordinary council meeting. Councillor, can I remind you that because we're out of sequence, that will only be a week and a half, two weeks away? Do I future? Okay, future council meeting. Before you, before you ask the question, can I ask the officers of a question? Have you captured the wording of the motion? You have, thank you. Councillor McFarlane?
Well, my question, Mr Mayor, given I thought this was just a fairly procedural process, what happens to the organisation while this particular person isn't authorised to act?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I withdraw that deferral. I've just realised that my 17.2 that I thought had been removed, has actually been removed and it's different to the one up there. So I'm rescinding my deferral, Mr Mayor.
What you're asking councillor Harriman is what has just taken place to disappear? Backspace, backspace.
Moving the original motion, thank you, Mr Mayor.
No questions about the preceding minute, all right. Councillor O'Callaghan, you have moved the motion. Who is seconding it? Councillor McFarlane was. Yeah. Okay, do we have any opposition? No opposition? Do you wish to speak councillor O'Callaghan?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McFarlane? Councillor McFarlane, do you wish to speak? No speakers, no opposition. It's carried unanimously. Seven, we'll move on to seventeen point three. Just pause a second while I find it, councillors, it is already up. Tabling of Assembly of Councillors' records. Certainly, certainly.
So move, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan.
Seconded.
Seconded, councillor Howe? Any opposition? No opposition? Councillor O'Callaghan, do you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Howe? Any councillor wish to speak? On that basis, the matter is carried unanimously. Moving on to seventeen, is there a seventeen point four? I don't think there is. It's okay, okay. Okay, right. Move on, urgent business, are any urgent business items, councillors? I take it there are none? I'll take some advice. Do I have to get the motion to move to close? I do. It's up there, is it? And it's moved by councillor White?
Thank you.
Seconded.
Councillor McFarlane, I take it neither of you wish to speak? And no other councillor, I'll take it it's moved unanimously. Members of the gallery, we come to the end of the public session. We invite you to join us for a cup of tea and then we'll resume in the closed session. Thank you. Bye-bye to those on Facebook. Thank you.